The League of Women Voters White Bear Lake area welcomes you to this virtual forum for the candidates running for Lake St. Croix Beach City Council. This forum is not open to the public and is not being livestreamed. The reason for that is to ensure minimal chance of cable interruption. It is being recorded and will be posted on our YouTube channel. In addition, local cable stations will replay this forum on a schedule determined by their station. Candidates, if for some reason your internet connection is lost, please call in using your phone. I'm Liz Nordling and I do not live in Lake St. Croix Beach and I'll be moderating the forum tonight. The League of Women Voters is a trusted, longtime, nonpartisan volunteer organization that encourages citizens to participate in government. Our mission is to support voter education and voter rights. While the League studies and takes stands on issues, we do not support or oppose any candidate or any political party. The goal of our forums is for voters to learn more about the positions of the candidates who will be on the November 3rd ballot. All of the candidates were invited to this forum and our candidates are Cindy Reitner Rider, Johannes Sandin, Christopher Smith. A fourth candidate JP Armstrong was invited but never responded to our invitation. So candidates will begin their opening statements in alphabetical order and after that, the beginning speaker will be rotated for each question. So we'll begin with opening statements and we're going to start with Cindy Ryder.
Oh, okay. Hello, I'm Cindy Ryder. I am number three on your ballot. I have been in Lake St. Croix Beach, Regis, Regis, excuse me, resident for 30 years and have 19 years of municipal government experience. Eight of those years actually was a past city council member. In my pursuit to be elected to city council, I've knocked on over 400 doors, delivered campaign literature and spoken with many, many residents. If elected, I would like to encourage the city council to work on the following five items. Completion of our comp plan and our recodification of our city ordinances. These projects have kind of lingered on, but I feel with the earnest effort and understanding from the city council, the city staff, the city commission, that we could get these done. These are both items of significant in management of the city and they, they do need to come to fruition and I would hope that would be soon. Number two, bring back a level of resident awareness of what's happening in our city and with our city government by returning the minutes to the newsletter, by keeping the website current and keeping those items on the website for a continued extended period of time. Oh, I guess we better move fast. Number three, address the possibility loss of LGA and how it will affect our city's budget. Maintain awareness of the 3M contamination and work as it pertains to our municipal water and number five will be later.
Thank you. Now with this opening statement is Johannes Sandin.
Hello, and thanks for inviting us to this. I've been a resident here for five years now. And just to get my feet kind of wet into the, into the foray of, of, of public servants, I guess, in a way, I've been on the parks board for three years. I've donated my time to helping the community with, I designed, as a graphic designer, I've, I've designed the, the new park sign that we have down in, down at the beach area here and I've participated in a few of the Helping Hands events that one of Noah Blue Sky has, has organized. The reason I'm running is I, I love this community and I want to have, I just want to see things. I want to see, I want to, I want people to have a fair shake at what goes on in the, in the government and I think that I'd be a good candidate for that.
Thank you. Now with this opening statement is Christopher Smith.
Thank you. First, I just want to thank everyone at the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. My name is Christopher Smith. I'm running for one of two open, nonpartisan city council seats in the city of Lake St. Croix Beach. I've lived in the city for a little over seven years. I'm running because I've tried to be an engaged resident. I have attended numerous city council meetings, commission meetings, city workshops and other various functions. I have served on the Parks Commission as an alternate for several years and on the Environmental Advisory Commission, also known as the EAC, prior to the current council's decision to do away with EAC earlier this year. Despite my attempts to be an engaged and productive member of our community, I've been routinely met with opposition towards creative thinking, new perspectives and ideas, efforts to increase community participation and decision-making. These roadblocks to meaningful participation seem to pop up everywhere in favor of doing things the way they've always been done. This reluctance to adapt to a changing world, the unwillingness to give serious consideration to ideas or concerns raised by residents are the primary reasons I'm running for city council. City government should work for our entire community and as a city council member, I will listen to residents, give resident ideas or concern serious consideration and work on being fair and transparent in our decision-making within our community. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now turn to questions. Questions were solicited from the public at our LWV email and we have a lot of them. The first question will go first to Cindy. What is the best way to finance in a timely way the plan for straight, street reconstruction throughout the city?
In the past, the city has always budgeted an allocated amount, usually typically recently, recent years, it's the amount of LGA we receive, we receive from the state. And we would fund our street improvements by saving for it. However, I feel with our situation as it is, the potential loss of local government aid, which won't go to our street fund. And with interest rates so low, I think that in walking around, some of our streets do need help, not just the main thoroughfares. I think we need to look more closely at the conditions of our streets. And if needed, I think it's time to bond for us for a large project, street for street improvement because those interest rates are so low right now.
Thank you. The question now goes to Christopher Smith.
Yeah, thank you. It certainly is complicated. Like Cindy mentioned, LGA, which has often been used as kind of extra money that goes into the street improvement fund, you know, is uncertain in these uncertain times. And so much like Cindy, you know, bonding may be something we at least should seriously consider. I think all possible approaches should be evaluated. I don't know what the best approach is. I don't have all the information in front of me at this point. But certainly, I think it's fairly clear in talking with residents and just driving around the community myself that the needs outweigh our current funding model. And so we need to look at all possible solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I cut you off? Were you finished?
Nope, I'm good.
Great, thank you. Question now goes to Johannes Sandin.
Yeah, I think I would, if I was to be elected, I would just make sure to, to find out what, what's available and, and make the, the mess, the best decision for the residents and with, without it being too much of a tax burden on, on the residents around here.
Thank you. Does anyone have any additional comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next question and it goes to Christopher Smith first. Do you think the city's protection of the St. Croix Riverway values is adequate or are improvements needed?
Yes, this is a great question. I am certainly of the opinion that there is room for improvement. A lot of the riverway ordinances were developed back in the seventies based on information that was present at that time. Our understanding of the riverway and what is necessary to best protect the riverway has certainly changed over the years. And the county has developed some new kind of template language. And so in working collectively as a community, I think it's certainly worth bringing together some sort of work group or commission to reevaluate what we have in place currently, what's working, what's not working and to try to identify those areas for improvement.
Thank you. The question now goes to Cindy.
Um, yes, in regards to the riverway, I feel that recently the rules that are out there, the city itself has been very lax in enforcing them. I think this is a great asset, our St. Croix River, and I also think that with greater knowledge about how to take care of the river with pesticides and fertilizer and those types of issues, I think residents need to be better educated on how it impacts our river. But first and foremost, as I said recently, I feel that the city doesn't even enforce its own ordinances. So I think I have some concerns there and I think if I'm elected to city council, I hope the new council will address those concerns. For example, we've had private residents cutting on city property, which is a city bluff. Those type of situations really should not be allowed to happen. And that's about, that's about it. I think we just need to take care of our river according to the ordinances we have and do more education and research on how we should keep that river healthy.
Thank you. The question now goes to Johannes Sandin.
Yeah, I think there's, there, there's always going to be room for improvement with, with the way that the environment is these days and how education can be a huge asset to, to, you know, residents who either live on the bluff or within the city limits because our watershed is in, within the waterway and yeah, allowing, you know, education is a huge thing for people to know, like if there's too many phosphates or if they're, you know, what they're putting in their lawn, is it, is it gonna, is it gonna affect the, the vegetation in the, in the river or, or fish or wildlife? So, so yeah, I think there's always room for improvement and, and, and moving forward, I would be, I would be totally on board with, with any sort of updates that we need to make to ordinances or, or yeah, those kinds of things within the city.
Thank you. Does anyone have any additional comments? Yes, Christopher.
So I would just add that, as I alluded to in my opening statement, the city council recently did away with our Environmental Advisory Commission. And I would work as a new council person with the rest of the council to revive that commission and task them with, you know, addressing some of the riverway concerns that our residents have.
Thank you. Cindy?
I would also like to reiterate that the city does to reengage our environmental advisory committee. They've been very active in the past, not only with just the natural and nature side of it, also addressing concerns such as recycling. Thank you.
Thank you. Johannes, do you have any additional comments?
Nope.
All right, then we'll move on to the next question. It goes to you first, Johannes. The St. Croix Riverway is part of the US National Park System. The city has a statutory responsibility to enforce the regulations that were created by the federal government when the park was created. There have been consistent situations where damage has occurred or the regulations violated. Do you agree with the city's apparent current practice of seeking ways to circumvent the riverway regulations? If so, why? If not, what changes would you advocate for?
Um, I haven't really heard of too, what, I haven't, I haven't heard within the city of, of what, what has happened, happening, but I, I'm not really sure what kind of penalties can be brought upon somebody if they, if, if that is a, uh, an issue with, you know, I, I don't know what they've done, but if, you know, cutting back vegetation doesn't seem like a smart idea because of the erosion that can happen along those hillsides. So, but in terms of like what you can do to a resident for those kind of violations, I am not too, I'm not privy on that, that information. I don't know if there's any laws that can be made to, to, to find these people or, or what, but that would be, you know, I would have to learn, learn more about the situation as to what needs to be done.
Okay, thank you. The question now goes to Christopher Smith.
Yeah, thanks. So, you know, like was mentioned earlier, certainly education is an important component to anything. But the city has, as Cindy alluded to, gotten into the habit of looking for loopholes to do things that perhaps a select few residents are advocating for, regardless of whether or not it's in the best interest of the community and the river at large. And so I certainly would advocate for, again, following the ordinances that we have in place at the bare minimum and then looking to some of the ordinance recommendations that are out there that are based on new and updated science to go above and beyond the kind of the bare minimums. And so again, there's that room for improvement. It doesn't have to be dealt with, with the stick enforcement approach per se, but making sure that we're just following the rules in place could go a long way along with that educational component.
Thank you. The question goes to Cindy.
Um, yes, and I did read earlier refer to the violations of basically our own city allowing the violations and I would like that the city, um, and it's going to have to be direct from the council and hopefully the council will be strong enough to engage residents and staff to understand the importance of our ordinances there that we have. I'm all for changing ordinances if, if that is the correct thing to do. Sometimes you just have to work through it and follow how it is. I'm kind of, for me, I'm kind of like a, a right and wrong. And so the rules say do this, whether you like it or not, you do this. But in the National Scenic Riverway, those rules are spelled out by state statute, by Washington County, and actually at the city level, and they are being violated by our residents. It is city-owned property. You certainly could find somebody for removing vegetation. And it's no different than if somebody comes onto your yard and cuts down your tree or your shrubs or your bushes. And the city does have that authority to find for things that are being violated.
Thank you. Does anyone have any additional comments? Yes, Christopher.
The vegetation cutting has come up a couple of times and as again Cindy mentions, a lot of our shoreline, our bluff area is city property. And so I would certainly advocate for a change in practices, you know, right off the bat in that if a resident brings a concern that might require some vegetation cutting on city property, that the city actually carry out that activity, whether it's through a contractor or in-house versus putting that on the resident just because there's a conflict of interest there.
Thank you. Cindy?
Can I add in regards to cutting on that bluff that we have? That I feel that there, before a permit is even issued, there should be a council member contact. We do have a list of duties and responsibilities. One of them is the bluff land for a council member. And also there should be a meeting, in that meeting should include both tree inspectors of which we do have two.
Thank you. Johannes, any additional comments?
Nope.
Then we'll move on to the next question. It goes to Christopher first. This is another environmental question. How would the city handle invasive, invasive species like buckthorn along the waterfront and in individual residents' yards to stop the spread?
Sure, this is another good one where education can go a long way. You know, Cindy mentioned the newsletter, you know, that's a way to get information out, having, you know, kind of city workshops or city trainings. It may be unpopular opinion, but buckthorn is really the least of our concerns. It's very well established in our community. But there are a number of other invasive species that are just kind of getting a foothold in the community and those would be the ones to prioritize and really go after. And again, on city property, the city can do the undertaking, but on private residences, certainly the city can help either provide expertise if the city has it or get that resident in contact with the appropriate folks at the state or at the university.
Thank you. The question now goes to Johannes.
Yeah, buckthorn around my property here is, is starting to become pretty rampant and I've noticed it in my neighbors' yards and, and I'm, I don't know if I can really go to them and say, can, do you mind if I cut your tree down? So, but I know that it's a huge issue and I think one of my neighbors was like, well, you know, even after we go, the buckthorn will still be here. And I said, well, okay, that's, that's funny and all, but I think that, you know, we should probably do a little bit more to, to try to, to stop that spread because it, it does seem to, like, you know, I didn't really know about it until a few years ago. And then if you look outside and you see like what it does to the lilac bushes are starting to die like the, around my property. And, and I think that, that's, that's probably due to the buckthorn and how it holds. Yeah, taking over the root structures of, of all these plants. And in terms of how the city can deal with it, I would hope that there, maybe we could set up a fund at some point for residents to either, you know, hire somebody to get it taken care of or, yeah, that would be my one, my one hope. But yeah, I think that's, that would be a good solution. Other than that, just education like Chris had, Chris mentioned.
Thank you. The question now goes to Cindy.
Um, yeah, a few years ago, our, our city used to be a Tree City USA. The city has since lost that designation. It does take staff time to fill out the paperwork to get that designation. But once you get that designation, there are grants out there that you're able to tap into. And so when it comes to invasive species, if we could once again be a tree city and look for grants where we could address some of the issues of invasive species, especially buckthorn. And as you drive around our little community, we have very, very narrow roads and a lot of pocket forests, I'll call it. But a lot of those pocket forests are totally becoming buckthorn. I used to have one across from the back of my house, lovely lilacs. Maybe there's one lilac left. But if we were to become part of that tree city, we may be able to tap, tap into some grants and, and, you know, get on board with removing some of the buckthorn, get the residents to remove some of the buckthorn. Um, that's about all I have to say for that one.
Thank you. Any additional comments? And we'll move on to the next question and it goes to Cindy first. It has become progressively more difficult over the course of the last few years for the average citizen to participate in the city's decision-making. Information about issues under discussion for adoption as city policy or amending existing policy is difficult to access and poorly distributed. What steps would you take to open up these processes and to encourage meaningful resident participation?
Um, I can speak to, actually experience in our city council meetings. We have now limited any public engagement to three minutes. And I think that if, if people take the time and effort to come to a city meeting, which is and can be intimidating, I think they should be allowed to speak. And I, I get that meetings could go on for quite a long time if everybody spoke their entire piece. But I think allowing people to speak more than just three minutes, either on a topic or a topic that's on the agenda or not on the agenda, I think they should be entitled to that. They're the taxpayers, they're the ones that put the bill for our city and I think they're the ones we're governing for. So that would be my, my first step in getting a little more involved, letting more residents be involved. And if they have comments to give to council, we should be listening because there might be some great ideas out there.
Thank you. The question now goes to Johannes.
Yeah, um, the, I, I guess I'm not that well-versed in how issues are brought up within a, within a council meeting, but I, I, yeah, I think giving the opportunity for residents to speak their voice a little more than five minutes or three minutes is, it seems like a smart decision. I would say, I would even say five minutes would probably be a good, a nice round number for people to, to voice their opinions. And, and in terms of getting things on an agenda, I'm, yeah, I'm not that well-versed in how, how that process goes. But I, I think that allowing people to have a voice is, is a definite thing that we need to, to allow people to have.
Thank you. The question goes to Christopher.
Yeah, it's a great question, one that I've run into quite a bit as an engaged citizen in our community. Certainly allowing adequate time at a council meeting is important. You know, these days with COVID, we're doing all of our council meetings over the phone. I would like to keep that as a option, even when we get back into in-person meetings, having a call-in option so people can listen in and be engaged, ensuring that all of our commissions and committees include some sort of public participation, whether it's a public comment period at the beginning of their meeting or just allowance of open discussion during the meeting itself. That hasn't always been the case. In fact, some of our commissions purposely don't allow public comment to try to, you know, keep, keep concerned residents from voicing their opinions. The other thing is making sure agendas get out online on Facebook, you know, in addition to being posted on the city bulletin board. You know, people shouldn't have to email the city clerk to get a copy of the agenda. That should be sent out, you know, as many different places as we can so that people know that there might be something of interest discussed at the council meeting. Currently, our agendas are pretty bare bones. They don't really talk about the details that are going to be discussed at the meeting. So you don't even know what's going to happen until you get there and you listen. And that's just not a good way to, to run a community.
Thank you. Additional comments? Cindy?
Yeah, and I would also like to bring up that this, that our city council meetings are city council meetings. So when council members would like to put something on the agenda, that, that should happen. If the agenda is too big for the, for that night's meeting, they should just bring it up in their report, request it to be on the next agenda. And that's how it should be. Many of these ideas come to the council member via residents and it, and it should be spoken of. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher?
Yeah, I would just add that the folks that, that do take the time to come and speak at a council meeting or a commission meeting, often the council doesn't take up those comments the night of the meeting. But there should be some carryover, some follow-through, some additional discussion so that those comments are given some serious consideration. It's not just a, a listening exercise for the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Johannes, any additional comments?
Uh, no.
And we'll move on to the next question. It goes to you first, Johannes. Should the Planning Commission undertake projects on its own initiative? Or should it work only on projects requested or at least approved by the city council?
Um, I would say, I, I mean personally, I would think that they, they should only, they're kind of an entity of the city council in a way. So I think that if there's something that's recommend, or if they want to recommend it, they should bring it to city council and if city council deems it a, a necessary action, then, then they, then they could follow through with it. If not, then, then it shouldn't be done.
Thank you. The question goes to Cindy.
Um, yes, I've worked in three different cities and typically the way it's been done in the past is the, a topic will come up at the council level. I'll use, for example, sex offender ordinance. It would come up at the council lover, level. There'd be some discussion on it. And then we'd say, well, okay, we don't have an ordinance for that. We should have an ordinance. Let's just, let's get this over to planning. So the direction should come from council and kind of top-down and on to the Planning Commission. If, if, if the Planning Commission did have an idea for an ordinance they felt was needed in the city, then they could put that in their notes, in their minutes and speak to their liaison, each of the councils, each of our plan, not planning, committees, commissions all have liaison council members. So if, if the Planning Commission felt that it, they saw a need for a sexual predator ordinance or short-term rental ordinance, that should go to their liaison to be brought to the city council, city council discussion on whether they want the Planning Commission to take up that project.
Thank you. The question goes to Christopher.
Yeah, I agree with a lot of what Cindy said. Certainly the bulk of their work should be at the direction of the council. That said, I do personally really like to see initiative, innovation, things of that nature. And so if the Planning Commission had an idea, you know, had an initiative that they were passionate about, again, like Cindy mentioned, either bring it to council through the liaison or even have the chair come and present at the council to get council direction or whether or not it's or even have the chair come and present at the council to get council direction or whether or not it's something the council wants them to move forward with.
Thank you. Anyone have any additional comments? Then we'll move on to the next question. It goes to Christopher first. Now, members were appointed to the city's environmental advisory commission this year. Should the commission be reactivated?
Yes, absolutely. Um, I actually was the chair of the commission last year before it was, uh, abolished by the current council. Um, you know, that it was a political move. The, the commission had brought to council several, several concerns about the, uh, lack of ordinance, uh, you know, adherence to those environmental ordinances the city already has in place. Um, the commission, um, you know, you know, raised several concerns in a public way and the council, uh, just turned a blind eye. It was a roadblock after roadblock. Um, it, it wasn't even a matter of, there was discussion and the council decided that what they were doing were, was okay. It was an all-out, you know, roadblock, you know, do whatever you can to, to stop residents from expressing their concerns. And in the end, it resulted in the commission being done away with this spring. And so absolutely we bring it back.
Thank you. Question goes to Cindy.
Um, yes, I am also, um, very disheartened that that, uh, EAC, environmental advisory commission was done away with. They've been very helpful in the past. I referenced recycling earlier. Uh, we've been, that, um, commission has been a very strong advocate for always improvement in recycling. They were very actively involved in the early two thousands to get single sort recycling. We were one of the first cities to do it. Um, more recently regarding recycling, they worked on a joint powers agreement with three of the cities to get a shared contract for recycling, which, uh, resulted in a great, um, savings for St. Croy Beach. I think it was about 50 cents per household and we doubled our recycling to weekly from bi-weekly. So they were a very, very valuable commission that I see. Um, also in regards to the environment, I think that who's, who's going to address the issues of Emerald Ash Bore? We have a lot of ash trees in our city. That would be a perfect commission to start addressing that. So I think it's just very, uh, very unfair and disfavorable to have eliminate, that eliminated that from our city government.
Thank you. The question goes to Johannes.
Um, yeah, I, I think, um, as, as a, as a member of the parks board, I've, I've been able to, see what the, the, the environmental commission had, had been putting forth and, and I think there was a lot of good information that, that was brought up. And I, I think that, um, it's been, uh, at times has been a good, a definite asset to the, to the city. Um, I, I wasn't really too involved with too much of what, um, what was going on with the, the inner workings of it. Um, but I think it's, uh, I, I don't see why, uh, I don't see why it couldn't be, uh, uh, brought before the council again and reinstated.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Yes, Christopher.
Yeah, I would just add that last fall, there was a solicitation for applicants and we got quite a few applicants to serve on that commission. And as a community, we're actually very fortunate that a number of people who work in the environmental field professionally happen to reside in our community. And it's really unfortunate and a disservice to the community at large to not take advantage of that interest and that willingness to volunteer their time, uh, to help protect our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with additional comments? Then we'll move on to the next question. It goes to you first, Johannes. What are your thoughts on enacting an independent ethics commission to oversee city staff and council in order to curb the issues of retaliation, harassment, conflicts of interest and abuse of positional power by elected officials in our community?
Um, well, that's a very good question. Um, I, I think that from what I've read in the past, that the, a council is supposed to be a self-policing or self-governing entity in terms of that kind of stuff. So, um, if there seems to be a, an issue where that comes to the forefront, then I, I'm not sure what the, the, if legal ramifications of it is, but if there is retaliation, I mean, I'm totally, I think that's completely wrong and, and, you know, there's, there's no room for it in a, in a, in a small community like this. It's, you know, I, I want, I, I love my neighbors that I, I live next to and I, I would, I would hope that everybody else has that same, that same experience. And, and to the fact that people aren't having that, that same experience is, is pretty appalling and, and I, I feel, I feel for them. But, um, in terms of what can be done, I, I, I don't know if having a, a commission, a separate commission or ethics commission is a, is the way to go. But, um, I'm certainly open to, to that being a, a, a solution.
Thank you. Question goes to Christopher.
Yeah, so, uh, like Johannes, um, I'm not sure that a commission, a separate commission is the right answer. Um, that said, the council should be held to a very high ethical standard. Um, it's a, a topic that I would need to do much more research on as far as what is and is not appropriate. And, uh, I have seen some questionable activities in our community by city officials uh, and figuring out the proper way to deal with that, whether there's existing policy in place or ordinances in place or procedures in place or not. Um, again, it would be something I would need to do research on and formulate, uh, an opinion once I had, had all the information in front of me.
Thank you. The question goes to Cindy.
Okay, I do know the city of Lea, Lake St. Croy Beach has a code of ethics that, um, is available for all council members to read. In fact, I think at one time you might've had to sign it. But it's out there. You also take your oath of office at the beginning of the year after you're elected. And that says you're going to follow all the, um, the rules of government, for lack of a better term. Also, there is an enormous amount of information from the League of Minnesota Cities on how council members should behave and act. One of theirs, one of their, um, topics is the authority of a council member. Well, a council i- is made up of five or sometimes seven people. That is where the authority is driven in that body of government. And one council member has really no authority out, outside in the, in the city per se, among the residents. So they don't have authority to say, well, you can or can't do that. You might be able to say, well, I think we have an ordinance against that, but you cannot direct residents on what they can and cannot do. And nor should they, anybody from the council be directing a staff member to retaliate it against any of our residents as well. So we do, we do have mechanisms in place. They just have to be followed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any additional comments? See none. We'll move on to the next question and it goes to Cindy first. Give us an example of when you encountered an unethical situation and how you reacted.
Oh, boy. Well, I guess I will, um, this is in regard to myself. I was a council member at the time and unethically, somehow a city document was, um, was used with my name on it. Although I wasn't the one that filled out the form, I wasn't one, the, the one that signed out the form. And unfortunately I did have to do an affidavit to Washington County courts stating that, that wasn't me that did that, that document. And it was a city document. That's extremely unethical. That's why I went to the extent of even doing an affidavit. Um, and you have to get those things notarized and, you know, you just, you don't, you don't do falsehoods. You just don't do falsehoods. People might not like or like, or they might not like hearing what you have to say. But the issue is just keep it honest. Um, so that, that's how I responded to that. I, all I could do was an affidavit to the court of that I didn't put my name on that document. And it was, it's very sad. It was very sad.
Thank you. The question goes to Johannes.
Um, being a, a, a new person into the, in, uh, I haven't, I'm trying to, I was trying to think during Cindy's response and I, I can't think of too many things that I've resp, like, and anything that I've been, that I've been put in front of me in terms of unethical things. I, 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 I don't have a, I don't have a, an answer. I, I think that as long as, if there's an ordinance that needs to be, that is being broken, or if, i- i- I mean, in these kind of terms, like, yeah, we should, there, the, you know, we shouldn't have to, that, that shouldn't be something that anybody deals with. And, and if it's, and to take the proper channels to, to rectify that, that, um, that unethical, whatever it is, then, then we need to, we need to take that, that action.
Thank you. The question goes to Christopher.
Yeah, so I have seen some unethical behavior in the community, uh, but I don't, you know, I don't want to spend my time pointing fingers. And so instead of doing that, what I'm going to do is tell you that when I see something that's unethical, I'm going to call it out. If I see something that's unethical, um, it's going to get dealt with in a, an open, so it's going to get exposed and it's going to get dealt with. It's not going to be covered up, which is something that I've seen happen in our community. When there's a mistake made, whether or not it's intentional or not, there's this, this uh, recurring theme of kind of sweeping it under the rug. And I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Any additional comments, Cindy?
I would like to note one thing that I've seen, and I've just recently found this out, that our commissions are made up of five member groups and typically with a couple alternates. Um, I recently found out that our Parks Commission, which is five members and the appointments are listed at the beginning of the year, either on the website, at a council meeting, um, in the newsletter, that for some reason, the decision has been made to run the commission with, as long as there's a quorum in existence at the time of the meeting, they just run with the quorum. They don't pull up an alternate and that is wrong.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Johannes or Christopher? See none. We'll move on to the next question. It goes to you first, Johannes. In what ways would you promote and sustain transparency, accountability and integrity within our local government and its various committees?
Um, I think it was mentioned before, but I, I think that the, the, we need to utilize the technology that we, we have at, at hand, be it putting the minutes, um, on the website and either, I don't know if we needed, if we need to get a Facebook page going for that kind of stuff as well. I'm not sure the, the ramifications that, that are involved with that, but definitely keeping the, the website up to date and keeping, I mean, there's been times where I, I've wanted to kind of look into an ordinance or, you know, if there's something I want to do around the house. Like if I, instead of going into the, into the, um, city hall to, to try to find this stuff, I think it should be, I think we should try to use our technology that, that's readily available. And, and especially during COVID now, like we, you know, nobody should be really going into the city hall building. Um, so I think that was, that would be a, a excellent solution.
Thank you. The question goes to Christopher.
Yeah, so as I, you know, door knock around the community and talk to folks that have lived here, many of which have lived here much longer than I have, one of the recurring themes that I hear is that I tried to participate and it just never went anywhere. So I've given up. And so I think first and foremost, we need to try to have a do-over, you know, encourage folks to come out and participate and then treat them with the respect that they deserve. Again, they're taking their time to come and express either concerns or ideas to improve our community. And so we need to give them respect, even if they, you know, their idea maybe isn't going to be supported. They should be given respect. Uh, it should be fair. So everybody gets treated the same way. Uh, and again, you know, getting information out. So everybody is aware of what's going on is really key. And we have, we have technology. We can do it. And that's, that's, that's what I would propose.
Thank you. The question goes to Cindy.
Okay, um, I hate to sound like a broken record, but, um, you know, in the days of electronic, uh, Facebook pages, although we don't have really a policy in Lake St. Croy Beach, there is a St. Croy Beach City Hall page. Um, but it's, it doesn't have any policies by its use. Uh, we do have a website which can be utilized quite effectively to bring current information on. And I have done some research, tried to do some research on our city's website. And they have eliminated much of the information that was out there, like minutes and agenda packets. That would halt some of the data practice requests coming to the city. I mean, because once you find out the information that used to be on the website, all the, the minutes and the agendas, and it's not there, you do have an overwhelming sense of why are they trying to hide this? So, I mean, you, it just, it, the process becomes broken when, when, when you want that trans, transparency and honesty out there. Um, I guess I don't want to beat a dead horse, so I'll just stop there.
Thank you. Any additional comments, Christopher?
Yeah, so one of the things that I would encourage the council, uh, if elected to do is to, uh, defer any ordinance changes that are being considered until we get our ordinances online. It's really tough for our community to weigh in on a change if they don't even have access to what the current ordinance is on. And the city's been working on getting ordinances online for as long as I've lived in the community. So seven years or, and more maybe. And so that seems like a pretty, pretty simple thing. Get the ordinance online before you do any more ordinance changes.
Thank you, Cindy.
I do wanna, and I brought this up in my opening statement, I think, um, you have to get the council and the committees and the commissions and, uh, staff on board with how important those ordinances are to a community to get them out there. Um, so once again, they have to be transparent. They have to be out there for everybody to see. It's like they shouldn't be hidden. And we've been dealing with this for many, many years. So it's time to like take the bull by the horns, dedicate the staff time. Let's get it done.
Thank you. Johannes, any additional comments?
Nope.
Well, after you talk about, converting the city ordinances, I, I have a question from resident. Spent a considerable amount of tax dollars to convert city ordinances to an electronic format to be posted on the city website. The process has dragged on for a number of years and still is not completed. What steps would you take as an elected city representative to expedite that process and to bring it to a conclusion and verify the accuracy of its content?
Who was that directed to? Sorry, you cut out.
That was for Cindy. Cindy. I'm sorry.
Um, well, when I used to be, um, more involved with the city, at a time when I was a planning liaison, planning commission liaison, there was a time actually where the planning commission went through that planning or went through that ordinance book, section by section. New members kind of had a, um, orientation on, okay, what does this pertain to? What does it really mean? So, and what I've seen in the pla, I'm going to say the past maybe five years is they've gotten away from that. And so I think if you engage your commissions and your staff and your council members into what that ordinance book actually is, I mean, it rules pretty much, rules your whole city. Um, and I understand it's a jumbled mess now. But we need to sit down. We need to take the time. And if the city needs to hire a planner to pull it all back together and finish off that recodification project, then get it back to planning to start going through each section and make sure each section and ordinance does what we actually want it to do in this city, then that's what we need to do. We need to dedicate the time and the money to get it done. Thank you. Thank you.
I somehow got myself muted. I'm sorry. The question goes to Christopher.
Yeah, so I don't know what the excuse has been for why those ordinances haven't been able to be put online. I'd be interested in trying to learn a little bit more about that from, you know, past council members and city staff. Uh, but certainly, you know, like I said bef- just before, uh, no new changes to ordinances until we get the existing ordinances dealt with. And if, you know, I know that there happen to be a few ordinance changes that the city wants to make. And so really, this should be the motivator, that if you want to make changes, we need to get stuff online so that any future change can be really assessed for merit based on the entirety of the ordinances for our community. And like Cindy mentioned, maybe we need to bring someone in to help. I, I don't, again, I don't know what the excuse has been, but it's, it's really, it's unacceptable at this point.
Thank you. The question goes to Johannes.
Yeah, I, I think that um getting these ordinances on, online is a, it would be so beneficial to, to all the, the residents and, and to get it and the, I, I don't, yeah, and as to Chris's point, I, I'm not sure why, what the, what the holdup has been, is there are there ordinances that are still like in flux and they don't want to, and they don't want to put anything in, in stone just yet to, because of that, or or what the reasoning is, but uh, yeah, I would, if, if elected, I would like to, to make sure that those would be readily available to all of our residents.
Thank you. Cindy, additional comments?
Yes, our ordinance book is considerable in size. And I think it would overwhelm most people having it all scanned in and on our website, but the items that pertain to the red, residents right off the bat, nuisance ordinances, zoning ordinances, what you can do to build a house, how you can put in a a fence, what you need to do for a, for a shed, does it need a building permit, does it not? Those type of things should definitely be out there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Additional comments? Then we'll move on to the next question. It goes to Christopher first. Change of topic is on infrastructure. What will the city do to fund infrastructure needs in the coming years? And you have to think beyond Quinlan, ro- and think about roads and water runoff.
It's a great question. It's, it's one that I don't have an answer for. Um, you know, as a council person, I would work as a team member to develop solutions. You know, we touched on this earlier, you know, whether bonding might be what we need to do. You know, raising taxes, which is something that no one wants to have happen, but uh, it needs to be in the mix. It needs to be discussed. Um, you know, special assessments I know have been discussed in the past. Um, all, everything needs to be on the table. And, you know, ultimately, we, I would, you know, advocate for, you know, trying to take on as little burden as possible. You know, but we need to, it, it, you know, it's an all hands on deck approach that we need to take. We need to consider every possible solution to this problem. But until I had all that information in front of me, you know, I can't tell you exactly what I would do because I don't, I don't have all the details at my fingertips.
Thank you. The question goes to Johannes.
Yeah, um, infrastructure within the city, um, I I would need to know more information on it. It's, it's a very, I think it's a very complex um subject because there's a lot of variables that, that are, that, that can be that, that are at play here and, and I would just need to know more about it. I'm not, I'm not that well versed in it.
Thank you. The question goes to Cindy.
Okay, well about two obvious in, infrastructure, infrastructure items you already stated, which were the streets and our water system, our, our pipes for the water system that we are in under joint powers through Lakeland Water Utility. That's, those pipes in our roads are about thirty years old. I was told that one time they should last till about fifty years. Um, I don't think the council has ever taken on what actually happens to those pipes that are in your, buried under your roads. I think that first needs to be um you know, council needs to be edu- educated, and I would include planning in that too. Um, because streets are kind of under their purview as well. I think there needs to be a big education because we only have probably twenty more years on those, that piping system. And so we have to get a grip on what actually happens and what the cost could be once it starts falling apart, because you know, it's kind of like a car. It'll start nickel diming us and we need to be prepared for that. So I, I think we need some more education on that. I know through our city engineer, we have a capital improvement plan for our streets where they they go out and they kind of rank our streets every five years and then punch in some numbers for this capital improvement plan where the city should be at with their funding to correct this, these streets that would need help at a certain time. So we should do something like that for the water system.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Yes, Christopher.
I would just add as a taxpayer in our community that, you know, roads are a, you know, an issue that I hear from just about everyone. And it's a really expensive issue. Um, you know, our, our, you know, infrastructure planning processes are all planned out, you know, many years ahead of time. And so we really should be, again, planning, you know, years if not decades into the future and saving accordingly. Uh, because it is, it really is a top priority for just about everybody I talk to.
Thank you. Anyone else? Additional comments? We'll move on to the next question. It will be the last question and it goes first to you, Christopher. What would you say the role of a city council member is?
It's a great question. Um, you know, really, being a civil servant, um, you're meant to uh, try to represent the, you know, the interests of the residents as a whole, so not any one individual, but as a whole. You are, you know, have a responsibility with the funds, the tax revenue that come in, also not, you know, spending things on, on you know, city hall renovations when maybe that's not the highest priority, for example. But really, it's about being a public servant. It's about listening, giving everybody equal chance and, and trying to you know, take all that information that you gather and, and bring that into your decision-making process and you know, with a high degree of integrity and ethics.
Thank you. Question now goes to Cindy.
Okay, as a council member, I think um one of your main duties is to see the vision for your city. Um, like, the city's not going to go away. It has to be here from fif- for fifty years from now. Uh, just like going back to the infrastructure and the water system. You have to be looking forward and what are we doing for our city going forward? So you have to have a vision. Um, you have to have some kind of a sustainability plan, how to, how to keep things in, in good shape, if you will. Also, you have to be worried about the property values within your city. Um, that's what people pay their taxes on. You know, they, they make, they make money when they sell their homes, you know, they may be planning like well, if the market continues to grow, go up, when I retire, I'll, I'll get this money out of my property. Well, if, if the city's not keeping um, up to speed on having a nice, we're typically a nice little community here, but some of the residences are, are kind of failing. And then that will bring down your property value. So it doesn't just affect the um property owner that has a challenge on their property. It also affects the other property owners around them. So I think to be sustainable and have a vision for your community.
Thank you. The question goes to Johannes.
Yeah, I think the, the role for a, a city council person is to, to just follow the rules and, and be, and, and be a good steward for your, for your community. Um, I think maintaining a, a self and he, um, that's like a safe, safe and healthy environment for all, you know, your neighbors and be, and just being a good neighbor in general is, is kind of the you know, we're all, we're all in a community together and, and being you know, nobody wants to, at least I don't think, nobody wants to fight with anybody around here. I, and I, if they do, they shouldn't. Um, and so I think that being a, a council person is i- i- you know, y- you take those values and you, you put them toward um toward the, the community and keeping, and keeping a, a good rapport with everyone and, and being, and just being a good, a good person, I guess.
Thank you. That was our last question and we will now go to closing statements. We'll go in the reverse order of opening statements, so we'll start with Christopher Smith.
I'd like to thank you, Liz, for moderating the forum and thanks again to the League of Women Voters for providing us this platform tonight uh, to share our thoughts with the residents. I'm going to keep my closing statement fairly short. I'm running for city council to give back to our community. I want to serve all residents in a fair and transparent way. I'm a team player. I look forward to working with whomever is elected to the five-person city council. If you value a civil servant that brings integrity to every aspect of the work they do, please vote for me, Christopher Smith, for Lake St. Cray Beach City Council. To learn more about me and my campaign, please visit christforoffice.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Now with this closing statement is Johannes Sandum.
Yeah, thank you for, for hosting this. This was a, a good, a good little forum. Um, I, you know, I to, to reiterate what we've said before, like I, I just want to be a good steward to, to the city and to the residents here. Um, I'm, I'm an open ear. Um, I think that I, I have a I think that I, I have a, a level head and a, and, and good, um, and I'm a good listener. And if people have issues with what's going on in the city, they, uh, I'm always open for new and fresh ideas and and, yeah, that's.
Thank you. Now with your closing statement is Cindy Ryder.
Okay, once again, Cindy Ryder, number three on the ballot. Um, I also want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting the forum. Um, quite different this year, but I think it's just as effective. I will tell you um, what other people have told me about myself. They've told me I'm trustworthy, I have integrity. I'm not going to tell you what you want to hear. A lot of times I'll tell you what you don't want to hear. But if there's something that can be done to help you, I will try and get you that. I'm a pretty good listener. I'm not real effervescent and bubbly, but I've been um, described as a nice person. Um, also, I have been a leader. I'm on the League of Women, uh, sorry. The Minnesota Women in City Government, I'm a board member there. I have chaired the local carnival. It was several years ago. I've been a Girl Scout leader. Um my campaign information says I have three springers and sadly, I'm down to two. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, candidates, for coming forward to run and speaking to the voters about issues. Thank you to our viewers for watching and for your interest in becoming informed voters. We will put all of our forums on our YouTube channel and you will find links to recordings for all of the candidate forums on the LWV White Bear Lake area website, which is LWV dash WBLA dot org. You can request an absentee ballot now on the Secretary of State's website, which is minvotes.org. If you need to register to vote or update your registration, you can also do that online or when you go to vote. Make your voice be heard in the general election by voting by November third. Thank you.